Welcome to our Town Hall for Covenant House, New Jersey. My name is Jen Williams. I have been serving our Covenant House youth from Atlantic City for the last 25 years. So it's my pleasure to welcome you to be a part of Covenant House. And thank you, thank you for giving up your time, part of your evening, just to spend and learn and be a part of our greater covenant community. And we don't take that lightly. We appreciate your investment of time just to listen and to learn. It's great to see so many people on the call, so thank you for that. And you know, what's kind of cool is that I know we're all zooming in from all different places throughout the state. We each bring our own kind of Covenant House story and connection. But the one thing that we do all have in common tonight is that we care about young people. And we care about young people that are facing and experiencing homelessness. So again, just thanks for being a part of this evening. Moving right along, I would like to introduce our Executive Director, Jim White, who is going to be speaking about serving more kids and how we're going to serve them better moving forward into 2022. So Jim?
Thanks, Jen. Jen, how many years did you come house?
Twenty-five this year, yeah.
That's crazy. Thank you. Thanks for your, Jen's done every job we've asked her to do. And that's the kind of spirit that inspires me, and I know inspires all our community. You know, when you come to Covenant House and people say, you know, we'd like to help. And I always ask, are you willing to wear a hairnet and serve potatoes? You know? And that's the spirit in which Jen and so many of our staff come, they'll do whatever it takes. And many of you on this call have worn a hairnet or slept out or worse. So we want to thank you for your commitment to our mission and to our kids. And before I go into kind of the math and things and the details, I thought I'd start with what we call a mission moment. It's a way to center ourselves. It's a way to kind of take a breath and remember what it's all about. And I've been doing this a long time too. And I've been very blessed to have spiritual leaders. Sorry?
You're in the dark.
I'm in the dark. Well, that's true, Jim. I am in the dark, but let me see. Maybe it's because it's my background? Am I in the dark? No, everyone else can see me? All right, Jim, I'm going to try to... Jim Gallagher has been a brother in the fight for a long time, so I'd like to make him happy. But I'm not sure I can, Jim. I think my light is as best as it's going to get, I think. Sorry. Anyway, Jim, I'm as handsome as ever, just so you know. I am as handsome as ever. I've gotten a little thinner and my hair is a little darker. Anyway, so in our, in one of the things that we try, our work can really take the life out. You know, when you see all of the challenges and experience often the horror that our kids experience, it can be overwhelming. And so it's important to take a breath and to get connected to the goodness. There's this great Eastern prayer I was taught as a young worker. It says, "Lord, comfort me in my afflictions and afflict me in my comfort. Comfort me in my afflictions and afflict me in my comfort." And I find that we've really been afflicted in our comfort. I gotta be, this has been a real challenging time for us at Covenant House in trying to dealing with COVID and being responsive and respectful to our kids, trying to be mindful of kids that are on the street and being open, doing all the changes that we've had to do to just keep the doors open. And we haven't closed, that's for sure. And we've kept our program at a pretty high level with the challenges of COVID. But as I think of that story of, well, that invitation, right? The invitation of faith. Comfort me in my afflictions and afflict me in my comfort. And so I was thinking, as I was struggling, as we all are, kind of through this process of figuring out what's the loving thing to do during this COVID experience, I got a wonderful call. There was a young person who came to us many years ago. About, I'm going to say five years ago. And when he came to us, he was sent by an institution that said, "Can you handle this young man? He is not in a good place. He's not in a good place. He's suicidal. He was in a very dangerous position. Can you wrap around him? Are you able to do that?" And we said, "We will do the best we can." And so he came to us and for the first few days, his eyes never left his shoes, right? He was in a real sadness and our team was worried about him. They wrapped around him and slowly his eyes began to rise. And our staff do what they do. And that's they connect. They get to know their names, they get to know their interests. They start to believe in our kids when our kids can't believe in themselves. And his eyes rose and he began the journey back to healing and health. He saw his mother die. And so that was a real traumatic thing for him. And it was the only real person in his life. So he was in great despair as we wrapped around him. We then through the Crisis Center in Newark, we brought him to Nancy's Place, a very special program in Montclair that's there for mental health. It's for kids who really need that extra care, that extra support to help them navigate medication, therapy and space. Often our kids just need time and space. And so he did that. And then he moved on and moved on and moved on. Got a text from him. Graduated from college, going to medical school. That's not the charge. That's not the charge. He called me and he said, "Can you help me?" And I'm like, "Can I help you, kid? Have a..." "What help do you need? Are we done here?" And he said, "I'm working at a nonprofit. I'm feeding the hungry up in the Bronx." And I thought, maybe you could help me think through, as I get ready for medical school and study for my test, I really want to help. And so I've taken on this role of feeding people in the Bronx. Shut up! If that isn't a moment of breath for all of us to kind of go, wow, look at that, as transformation can happen. In darkness and despair, there can be light. And that we can be part of that if we just stay faithful, true to our journey, work really hard, believe in them, often when they can't believe in themselves, and miracles happen. Lord, comfort me in my afflictions. Wow, did my heart rise. I got up a little earlier. I'm working a little harder for the work and the mission that we're all about. So I share that story with you. It choked me up to know this young man. And if you met him, he's just a treat. He's just got life in him. He's got a lot to do now in the world. A man whose eyes never left his shoes, a little boy frightened, is now on his way to not only helping others in the world as a doctor. I hope, we're hoping he gets, I might be calling you to help me get him into medical school, so don't get too excited, right? We'll see, we'll see how he does on his test. But he's studying hard and he's helping feed people in the Bronx. This is our story. This is our story. And so I'm happy to share that with you, our young man, Jordan, who's really doing a beautiful job. Let me give you a little recap of what we've done and what we're trying to do. We're honored to have our team. I just look at our staff and I smile, their dedication and their commitment, their sense of humor. It's often making fun of me, which I don't like, but you gotta take it. You gotta take what you get. And we're just very blessed to have this extraordinary dedicated team. As we started and what we've been doing, as you all know, is keeping the place safe. So whether it's mask wearing, social distancing has been a real challenge, vaccinations, all these challenges have happened. I'll try to give you some of the math, just so that you know. We've been mandating with masks for two years, I think. We've been testing regularly. We test twice a week regularly. Everybody in-house gets tested. Our team has just done a fantastic job of getting the results quickly so that we can monitor and manage. At our worst, we had 26 young people quarantining in our buildings. And 11 staff were also sick at the same time. You can imagine how challenging that was for coverage, safe space, sanctuary, keeping them occupied. It was, it was, it was a nightmare, really, to be honest, for so many of our staff. But we stuck together. And one of the beautiful things about our staff and our team is that we talk about this all the time, about resilience, and that we need to have resilience and we need to take care of ourselves. You know, those important things, which I know that you all are doing as well. So we got through that really difficult time of that high level of kids that were sick and our staff that were sick. Thank God, it wasn't in the heart of the pandemic. It was more in the January period of time. So when there was an uptick for all of us. So that was something that we were able to weather and to get through. We did lose a young person who was with us at Mothers and Babies Program from COVID. She had left us for a couple of years and she wasn't in good health. But so we did suffer a loss from COVID. But everyone else is recovered and is moving forward. We are excited to talk about what we're doing in the future. I don't want to steal Sarah Allison's role and responsibility in sharing with you some of the specifics. But we did get a dip in census. And I did want to talk to you a little bit about this because this has been a bit of a head scratcher for me. And I know it's been a concern of the board. And it's not only Covenant House in New Jersey. It's many programs, many shelter programs and many Covenant Houses throughout the country that when COVID hit, we were assuming that we were going to get an onslaught of young people. Suicide is up. Domestic violence is up. Addiction is up. Surely homelessness would be a flood. And that did not happen. And we were really surprised to see that. And we think it's about people unwilling to go into congregate care where there's other people who have COVID. And so there was a diminution of kids coming into Covenant House. That has since changed. We've seen a significant uptick. And we've also taken a proactive role in trying to connect kids at risk, kids who are homeless to Covenant House. And I think that effort has gone on quite well as the numbers now continue to rise. We have modified beds because of the distancing. And we will continue to modify the bed until we get a real clarity from the CDC and other entities that we're talking to about when it's appropriate to bring back more beds and tighten the space in both crisis centers in Atlantic City and in Newark. And so that's really kind of the message. We've had some challenges in the past too of staff coverage. You can imagine when you're sick and you're out, how do we cover the staff? How do we cover the program? And so people have really had to go above and beyond, put themselves at risk and their families at risk. And I'm happy to report that no one didn't show up. Everybody showed up for their spot. And that, I think, is an affirmation of our team, their dedication and the spirit and the connection and commitment to our young people. So that's, that's really been a bright spot. The other new thing that I'll just share and then I'll turn it over. And we can ask questions, I'm sure there might be questions, as we continue to provide shelter in our nine programs throughout the state and expanding our voucher program and getting kids into apartments. So we're really excited about a lot of the improvements. The major thing that we've been doing is working in human trafficking. We now have been identified as experts in human trafficking because of our work. We got appointed by the Attorney General Office in the state of New Jersey to be the lead agency for all those who experienced... Am I back or no? Did I lose you?
Jim, you're back and you look, Jimmy, you look fantastic. Paul and Ron, but I think it's just the two of us, so I can say nice things about you.
You know, your pants are on fire.
It's not just the two of you.
I'm glad I didn't say anything personal then, all right? I'm going back on mute.
So I don't know where you lost me, but...
What'd you say?
Where did I lose, where was, what did you, where did I lose you guys? Do you know? Anybody remember?
Yeah, you were talking about, you were talking... Human trafficking, human trafficking.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we've been really the point on that. We served 186 clients that experienced human trafficking. We're doing trainings all over the country now. All the Covenant Houses will be trained by Covenant House, New Jersey and our experts. We've been really blessed to have senior people like Jeanette and others. You're going to meet Allison and Sarah, who've been in our work for many, many years. And that expertise is now being tapped. We're doing national trainings to educate people on what is trafficking? What is human trafficking? What is the trauma? How to deal with it appropriately? How not to re-traumatize? And how to work effectively with those who experience that high level of trauma? So it's really cool to, it's always frightening when they call you experts though, right? You never feel like an expert, especially when you're dealing with such difficult and challenging things. But our team, under the guidance of Julia Einbahn and Rowley, have done a fantastic job of really becoming a voice for those who've experienced really horror. And so we're honored to be part of that. You know, that's our tradition, right? Is what else can we do? What more can we do? And so that's really the more thing that we've been doing now for over the last year and change. And we're being invited now all the time to do trainings. What we've decided to do at this point was to only do training to those people who serve our population. We have a certain bandwidth. We can't just do it for everybody who'd like us to do that. So we've decided to circle the wagons and only really provide training for those in service to survivors. And so our hope is to expand that. You know, but at this time, because of, you know, resources and the work that we have, it's a full boat. And we'll just, we'll just do that technical training for other Covenant Houses and other programs throughout, throughout the country. So I'm really proud of, of that, that in this dark time when people are cutting back and cutting programs, we've taken a different approach to go aggressive and expand and to try to challenge and do more in the world, in our sector of kids at risk. And so we've taken on this human trafficking thing. And I'm really proud of the team and the spirit. When most people are kind of reducing and hunkering down, we're advancing the mission. We'll serve more kids. We'll provide more housing opportunities for kids this year than ever before. And that's in the fate of getting a lot of challenges of our own health, of so many challenges, keeping, keeping the building safe and, you know, trying to get the kids to wear masks. It's sometimes, Sarah, maybe you can talk about it. It's more than challenging. You know, it's a mask, it's not a hat. You know, it's those kinds of conversations that go on. And even though we're treading water in so many areas, we are trying to expand and to grow and to challenge ourselves to reach more kids at risk. So really happy for our human trafficking initiative, for the expansion of our voucher program, helping kids get their own place. And then supporting them in it is really, is really crucial as well. So we are going to continue to fight the fight. We're going to continue to expand and to provide more care for our kids. I'm really excited that Allison has joined us. She's been with us for a long period of time. She's an expert in the mental health world. And we've shifted her to really leverage her deep experience of working with kids in the therapeutic process to try to connect and provide more of that for our young people. I won't steal her thunder there, but really honored to have her here and her commitment working to expand kind of the mental health support. It is so important for our young people. You know, I was just talking to Nancy Kane. Nancy is the woman who partnered with me when we built Nancy's Place. It's an extraordinary, and we talked about the hundreds of kids that we've helped with mental health. And, and we recognize that if we didn't reach out and provide them health, give them that space, they would probably, most likely be part of the adult homeless population with, which is filling up our cities. Jordan, who's going to medical school, could have been that part of the population. Could have been. If he stayed in that mental institution, didn't get the care and the freedom and the belief, what's to say he wouldn't have believed in himself? And have forgotten hope and all that lays in front of him? He could have forgotten that, right? But he didn't. He got lucky. He came to a place that loved him. Lucky us. Lucky us. With that, I'll turn it back over to the famous Jen Williams.
Thanks, Jim. And thank you all again for being part of a place that loves young people. No matter what they bring to the front door and what comes in, you know, we open our arms, we say welcome, and we absolutely love them. And one of our champions who's been loving young people at our Newark site for quite some time is Sarah Jones. I'm going to have her introduce herself. And she's going to take a little deeper dive into how COVID has impacted just operations throughout the state. So Sarah?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks, Jen, for the introduction. Again, my name is Sarah Jones. I'm the Associate Director of our Service Management Department. I have a social work background, so I'm kind of infusing some of that mental health background and lens and working with our, with our staff and helping our young people as they come to our crisis shelter. Kind of to piggyback a little bit off of what Jim said, I think a big part of the last two years really has been resilience, reassurance and being responsive and respectful to the young people that we serve and to staff as well. I mean, the last two years, almost now, we've done a lot of learning, a lot of learning, I think, as most of the world, trying to understand COVID, the risks, how to keep our young people safe, how to keep our staff safe and how to continue to open the doors and still provide services for our young people who need shelter, who need help with documents, who need help with their educational employment and housing goals. So I definitely wanted to start with that because it's been an ongoing process of working as a team, just continuing to learn about COVID and how it's impacting our community, how we can pivot, which I think has been a buzzword, but how we can pivot and move through this and continue to stay true to our mission as best and safe as possible. You know, we were fortunate to be able to partner with the Department of Health through the state of New Jersey so that we were able to offer weekly COVID testing onsite. It was a free service they extended to us. And so that they deliver us the supplies. We have someone that does the observation and we do the COVID tests every week and send it off to the labs. And that really provided initially through this journey a lot of support and, you know, identified anyone who was positive so we could take next steps with them, both staff and youth. And so that has, that was a big help throughout all of this journey as well. You know, and Jim did mention some of our shifts in census because as we were learning about COVID and trying to keep things safe, you know, we did have young people that tested positive. And so we had to create space in the building for them to isolate, to still receive, you know, attention needs met, but in a safe way for them and for the rest of the community. So we did have to shift our census a little bit to accommodate isolation spaces. And we did use it quite a lot, especially December with the Omicron variant. That was a big shift for us throughout the state as I think most of, of the United States were affected, right? Pretty significantly this last December into January. But our, you know, for us, what, a big shift that took place was with rapid testing. You know, it really changed the game for us. We were doing the weekly PCR testing, but rapid testing provided additional reassurance and had a huge impact on our community. Our young people who weren't feeling well, we were able to test them immediately. Some were positive and we moved into isolation. Others were, you know, we just monitored. And we're able to provide staff with some of that rapid testing as well. And that allowed us to continue to keep the doors open. Instead of pausing census, we're able to continue intakes, really help, you know, and provide a space to support more young people and really change and really start to increase our census, you know, above our goals. And so that was a big shift for us, February, January into February. We're also able to connect with the Adolescent Housing Hub for referrals, for intake, schools and hospitals. And our Human Trafficking Victim Services Team also were able to send some referrals, some youth our way. So rapid testing really had a huge impact on our community. We were even able to join part of a federal program. The test is called the Q. I've actually seen some commercials online on TV for it. And that's PCR level testing. So every new staff that comes in, I'm sorry, every new youth that comes in, we do a rapid test with them so that we're just ensuring safety and continuing to help our young people. We've also focused a lot on physical health education. We have a new staff that joined us over the summer who really has provided a lot of COVID vaccine education to our young people. We got up to 73% who were fully vaccinated at one point. You know, our census shifts and ebbs and flows. So we really were able to help our young people understand what the COVID vaccine was, provide the education, provide them with space and opportunities to, to get the vaccine. So that was a big part of our work as well, the past two, you know, past year or so. Yeah, and Jim also kind of touched on the staffing, you know? We did have some hiring gaps, you know? The holidays are a tough time to hire. COVID full force is a hard time to hire. You know, I think not only did some of our young people not want to come to a communal setting, you know, that might not be ideal for some new staff, but we're happy to report that we've just hired quite a few new staff this past week and really onboarding them and building team. And so that's been a big positive impact on our community too. So I think, you know, we're still doing mask wearing and social distancing. We're still following CDC guidelines. You know, our hope is one day, you know, as we get a little further away, that we don't have to continue to wear masks. It is a tough conversation and reminders to have with our young people, not the way we always want to engage them. We know we really do want to talk to them about what they're doing well and what they're working towards, not having to always give the mask reminders. But, you know, it's part, it's part of the education on the work that we're doing. So, you know, you know, we've navigated, it's been a long two years, but I think that, you know, we've had such a solid team. We've really come together and made the adjustments and shifts as needed and continue to learn and continue to grow, kind of moving into a new phase of continuing to follow our mission and be responsive and resilient, both youth and staff in the building. I know, you know, we have a Q and A in a little bit. I'm happy to answer any more direct questions that come up, but that's kind of my overview of COVID and kind of our impact on our community here at the Newark Crisis Center.
Thanks, Sarah. And, you know, I know that in the North, the spirits have been, have maintained high above staff and also just loving and caring our young people. I can vouch for the South as well. You know, you do what you do because there's no other place for these young people to go. So we, we all do it with the spirit of love and that's our mission. And so we were still here. It's now my pleasure to introduce Allison Ianneron, who's going to talk a bit about some new ventures in our Dove Learning Center. So Allison?
Hello, everyone. I'm Allison Ianneron. I have been with Covenant House over 12 years. And as Jim mentioned, I started in the Behavioral Health Department. I am, I have my LCSW and part of the Dove Learning Center 2.0 has been infusing some behavioral health into our Dove Learning Center. We recognized, I think, a long time ago that a big piece of what our young people need is that behavioral health support. And sometimes the one-on-one individual therapy, while that's helpful, it's not the best way to reach as many young people as possible. So what we've done some shifting towards is recognizing where we have some gaps in our services and how can we expand these gaps? So we've done a little bit of work, kind of, some, some programming started as pilot programming during COVID. And we did some work around finding funding so we could continue these programs, which were really wellness creativity groups, like Broadway Inspirational Voices, Crossing Points Arts. We also then have infused more of the mental health into some of our social navigation in our Dove Learning Center. So recently, we got grant funding to start a men's group, which has always, always been a huge gap in services for our Behavioral Health Department just because we didn't have any male social workers. We've occasionally had a male intern that was here and there, but for the most part, we've been female dominated. So giving the young people an opportunity to have this men's support group where they can talk about their feelings and they can talk about trauma and how they recognize it in their body has really been a huge shift for some of our guys. There's like a handful of guys at the Newark Crisis Center who every week, when I remind them about group, are very excited that that's the day that they get to go to the men's group. So that has been an awesome shift in our services. We also, with the help of interns, have been creative in our programming. So we, you know, we like to tap into our young people's interests, right? So they all like music. So we were able to create a group called Write and Record where they are writing about relationships. And then also the second piece is they get to use our music technology to record their music. So they're writing these songs about relationship and it's helping them explore relationships and then also recording it. So just a few of the things that we've sort of started as we integrate the Behavioral Health Department into the Dove Learning Center is just really thinking about where we have gaps, recognizing those gaps, and how can we fill those gaps and help reach as many young people as possible. Some of the other things that have been exciting about the Dove Learning Center is that we were able to receive a grant to open a Dove Learning Center at our Moms and Babies Program. So Raphael's Life House now has a DLC specialist. And with the help of another grant, we were able to create a beautiful space for our young ladies to learn, to participate in virtual programming that happens at the Newark Crisis Center. So anything that we run in Newark, they are able to participate in. And anything that is run at Raphael's Life House, they're able to stream back to us at the DLC in Newark. So with that virtual programming, although COVID has been a beast for a lot of us, that virtual programming has sort of been our silver lining. We really have been able to get more programming to more young people through this virtual programming and the Zoom calls and all of that stuff. So we, I'm happy to announce we have the Dove Learning Center up and running at Raphael's Life House. The girls are really excited. It's been an awesome shift. And what else? Oh, we also, so a big initiative has also been, something I've been most excited about, has been our Workforce Development Pilot Program. What we've learned from our young people is that they want money. When they first come in, they see the only way that they're going to get out of home... When they first come in, they see the only way that they're going to get out of homelessness is to make money. Whether they're prepared to work or not prepared to work, they are ready to make money. So what we've learned is that if we can provide them with coursework and stipend that coursework and then provide support once they're in these job placements that they're then able to maintain this employment. So our Workforce Development Program is comprised of three unique elements. So we have a workshop that introduces the career because you don't know what you don't know. So we're really trying to be creative in finding these different people to come in and talk about careers that our young people could possibly do in the future. So that was the first piece. The second piece is that we're paying for the coursework and then also being able to stipend the young people for attending the coursework, which has been a game changer. And then also creating a job coaching program so that then they have supports put in place for when they are ready and attending this coursework, when they're attending their jobs, hopefully getting interviews at the end of these programs. So we were able to do a pilot program that started, when did it start? Beginning of January, I think we actually got it started. But it was an IT pilot program. So with the help of Accenture, we were able to create those workshops that introduced everybody to the IT field. And what's exciting about the IT field really got some of our young people excited to learn and to be in that field. Through a Covenant House International Workforce Grant, we were able to pay for the coursework and then stipend our young people to attend the coursework. And then Covenant House New Jersey has created a job coaching program that really focuses on skill building for our young people. So I'm happy to say that we had three participants who have already started this program. We have one that's supposed to be starting soon and our target is to have eight for the year. And basically, this is what we're trying to do for all of our programming. We really believe that this format will help our young people learn. It will help them feel more focused. So our ultimate goal is to provide this type of programming for our young people in a variety of different fields. We think that that one person, the job coach in that field will help make the difference in whether or not our young people are successful. We really focus a lot in the Dove Learning Center on relationship building. So we think that that is a really important piece to the whole puzzle. So I think that is all of our, we're always looking for volunteers. This is my pitch for volunteers. So anybody who is interested, please feel free to reach out. Because I don't, I didn't mention in the beginning, but our Dove Learning Center is primarily run by volunteers. So if you're interested in volunteering and you have anything that you want to bring to us, any ideas, please reach out because we're always looking for more volunteers to engage our young people. And if you have any questions, I'm available as well in the question and answers.
Thanks, Allison. And volunteers are needed in the South as well. So if you're, if you are below one ninety-five and it's more convenient to come down the shore and lend your skills and services, please feel free. Thank you, Allison. I'm going to bounce it back to Jim real quick, who's going to touch on our strategic plan before we go right, before we go to the Q and A. So Jim?
Thanks, just for a few, you know, we always have to kind of advance. And I talked about that, I think in organization, it isn't moving forward, it's probably going backwards. And yet this was a real challenging time. So we've just embarked on our strategic plan and we're calling it, what's the loving thing to do? And what we're asking every staff member is to look at their circle of influence, where they are in the organization and what can they do to enhance? And what standards of care can we establish to lift our game? And so everyone has an opportunity to respond to that question. We call it the question that has no right to go away, right? It always has to be in front of us. What is the loving thing to do and how do we do it better? Whether it's how do we clean the building better, how do we do better food? How do we engage our kids better? How do we hit, connect to kids out on the street? And really challenge ourselves to have a standard of care. So that's one of the things that we're going to do. And one of the things that came really apparent to me was that our programs, you know, I know, thank you, Paul, I am looking good, but our buildings are not, you know, some of them have been worn. You know, when you put a thousand, thousands of kids through a building, it takes its wear and tear. So we're going to do some upgrading. So I know, Charlene, you're going to be happy to hear this. We're going to upgrade the kitchen at Raphael's Life House. We have an endeavor to do that. And we really want to expand the care there by just having an outstanding kitchen. Peter Salerno, who was a kitchen designer extraordinaire, has agreed to help us through that. So we're having our friends tap in and we're going to do that at Nancy's place as well. And we're going to take a look at our crisis centers, both in Newark and Atlantic City as well. So we need to, it's what, right? We know that environment is so important. What a way in which we can demonstrate clearly that you're worthy by bringing into a program that is attractive. And so we're really going to try to lift our game. We've already begun that in Newark with our front entrance, but you know, we'll continue to do that. So that's part of the physical plant improvement of the loving thing to do. There's a little of that to do for sure, but also in the care, right? And also I've challenged the staff to ask that about themselves as well. You know, what is the loving thing you need to do for you? So that when you come through our doors, you're bringing your A game. You know, what are you doing to really make sure that when you hit the door, you're solid, you're ready to go and you're ready to give a hundred percent and really be present? That's the key word I like to say to our present to our young people. So that's just a quick update and we'll see how that unfolds. And this is a community of real caring people. So to take the breath, to sit back, take a breath back and to revisit this question of what is the loving thing to do? I'm really excited to see some of the things that'll come from all elements of our program as we continue to try to care for our kids in the most effective and best way.
Awesome. Thanks, Jim. That's exciting, exciting to always be trying to improve and do the loving thing for young people, for our community and for you, for you all as well, that helps support this work. So we're going to open it up for Q and A right now. If you have a question, please feel free to tap, to tap it, to type it into the chat. We'll be monitoring that for a bit. Anybody have a question either for Allison or Jim or about any of our initiatives or things that are going on at the sites?
Sorry, do the questions need to be typed or can we ask a verbal question? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Paul.
So sorry, so, I wanted to mean, just so impressive, all the work that you all do for the kids. It's inspiring every time we hear it and, you know, it's not lost on all of us through the challenges that you've had to overcome, to help, you know, to help the kids overcome. So it's just incredible. On the education side, for Alyssa, I was thinking, you know, our kids, you know, come in the door, you know, with all sorts of challenges. And do we, have we ever considered, or do you think it might be a good idea to couple with some sort of assessment, right? In terms of, I mean, I'm sure the educational background is very different, right? And very uneven, but my, the concept would be, you know, if there were some sort of, you know, some sort of aptitude type test that wouldn't freak anybody out or would be sort of comfortable and at the right time, could we identify, you know, some folks that maybe have some real analytical chops that we're not really aware of? And then, you know, and really sort of channel them into areas that they, you know, might not otherwise, you know, get an opportunity to based on really the handicap of education they've had coming into us.
Sarah or Allison, I think either of you could answer that, Sarah probably.
Yeah, I mean, I can start with one end of it and maybe tap Allison into the second piece of it when it comes to sharing educational opportunities or learning for them. I mean, we often get young people who don't have a high school diploma. And so there's a couple of challenges that we face. We actually have a really good partnership with Lead Charter School in Newark. They work with sixteen to twenty-one year olds, no matter what. So this could be someone who has only a seventh grade education, never even got to finish eighth grade. They can still enrolled in Lead Charter School and they actually take kind of a social emotional perspective as well on like building up their different area, not just providing straight education. They are also providing conflict resolution and just some of those pieces. So they align well with us. And so that is one piece of it, or helping a young person stay connected to their home district despite being homeless and getting transportation. So there are young people who don't have the diploma yet where we're helping them navigate getting that high school diploma or getting the GED. For those that do, it is about helping them to learn and explore what they might be good at or what they might be interested in. And I'll let Allison tap in a little bit on what the DLC is doing and the support for different careers and learning opportunities that we can provide.
So part of what we have started to do is a group called Career Correction Connections. And what we're trying to do is bring in professionals from all different fields to show our young people like what's out there. It's part of the Workforce Development Pilot Program. We're really trying to find careers specifically now that we can also find funding for so that we can fund them attending this coursework and getting this degree or certificate or whatever it is that they're looking for. But we are actively looking for different people in different fields to kind of introduce. We had someone come in last week and talk about exothermic molding. I don't really know what that is, but he was, he was willing to talk to our young people and tell them all about it. And then he, they have a meeting to go onsite to see his, the factory? The, I don't know, workplace where they create exothermic molding? And then, so anyone who's interested is able to go and kind of check it out. And he has already committed to taking on one of our young people to like, help them in like an apprenticeship fashion with hopefully a job at the end of it. So I know our career development specialist, I missed a couple of words in there. She is taking a bunch of young people next week to check it out to see if that's something that they're interested in. So we're always looking for opportunities like that, but we also want to have the connection where we can guarantee something for them at the end of it. Because like I was saying in the beginning, like a lot of our young people are really, really focused on money because money equals getting out of homelessness, right? So they're trying to get out of homelessness as quickly as possible. So whatever we can do to help them get out of homelessness, but also get out of homelessness with perhaps a career path is sort of what we're leaning towards at this point, really trying to open their eyes to that stuff.
And you know what, Paul, I want to say this too, Paul. I think what you're saying too is can we assess somebody? Find out there's a diamond in the rough educationally and advance that. And I guess the challenge that we see at Covenant House, the sad part of it is we see a lot of kids with potential. It's really about desire. So those kids, this kid who I mentioned earlier, he had a desire to go to school. So we created a path, bent some rules, did some things to make that happen. But if they don't have the desire, and I think our team said it well, they usually come in with a money desire to make some money. But often, we have a lot of kids going to school and going back to school and getting their high school diploma and going to college. So we really have to go with their desire. And we call it a choice program. And I've seen some really bright kids who, and I can sell, right? I couldn't sell them on school because that's not, it wasn't their desire. So we have to really kind of go with their desire. But when a young person says, I want to go to school like Jordan did, we make it, we try to do our best to make that happen. And I think both Sarah and I said, we have good partners in the community. And you know, you can't be everything to everybody. So it's really important that we humbly approach this work and work with other players and people who are really efficient and can do, you know, I think they do a real good educational job, so that's what we'll point them to. But we have people on all different levels. Some go to college, some have trouble reading. And we have to try to meet them where they're at and their desire.
Thank you.
Great work. By that, do you expose them to the trades then? Have they been exposed to the trades? Or do you get the different VOTEC schools in the areas where these crisis centers are? And do you expose them to the VOTEC experience? How do you help them?
Yeah, so that is the goal, is to get them into either vocational trade programs. Or again, like, we even had someone recently who got connected with like an HVAC program because that was something that he was interested in. And through our partnership with Newark Workforce Development, they were able to, they're funding the program as well. So sort of along those lines, like really looking for those trade schools or different connections, like we have a connection now with with an insurance company with, oh, God, Aon? Aon, Aon, thank you. I always want to say OAN, but I know that's not right. It's Aon. And they actually offer like an apprenticeship, like they will send people to school for two years. They'll get to work twenty-four hours a week in their office building, doing work in the insurance field. But it's finding someone who's interested in that field too. So it sort of takes that special match of like finding what our young people are interested in as well as finding these trade schools that will pay for them to go to school and do what they have to do to kind of move forward.
Awesome. Thanks, Allison. So we have two questions. First is, is NAMs going to happen this year? I think we'll find out in about eight minutes. Hold on to your hats. And then Suzanne asked the question about what, not sure what connections are needed for something like this. Has Khan Academy or LinkedIn Learning ever been explored? So I'll leave Allison or Sarah to answer that.
We haven't used either of them at this point. I actually have never heard of LinkedIn Learning, but you know, I'm going to explore it now. So yeah, I will definitely be looking into the LinkedIn Learning.
And we've used Khan Academy to support supportive learning. Like kids are going to high school and struggling with a certain element. They can tap into Khan Academy, which is great. And they're able to subsidize some of the work that they have to, you know, just to give them a follow-up and support to do. So we have used it in that kind of as-needed basis, at least in the past.
That's why calls like this are so rich, right? Because we present information and then all of you have resources that we're likely not connected to or ideas to share and things that we can pursue. So thank you, thank you for being open and sharing. Couple of minutes left, does anybody else have any other questions or things that you'd like a couple more details about before we shift into some upcoming events that are taking place?
Hey, I don't know how to write a question.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm wondering about, my name's Beth and hello to everybody. So wonderful to hear all the news that you've shared. With everything that's going on in the world, how are young people responding to the crisis in Ukraine? And is there, you know, with, we're going to have refugees coming. Is there a way that some of these people who are not connected to jobs and learning can do some helping in this aspect? And have you thought about that?
You know, you know what, hey, Beth, good to hear your voice, hon. Beth's an old, good old friend of mine and lucky to have her as a part of our community. You know, Beth, I think, to be honest, our young people, for the majority of them, homelessness is so much in their face, right? Their own stability is so much present in their heart that they often don't have a view of what's happening outside the world. I remember during nine eleven, I was in Newark and everyone was devastated and so many of our young people were influenced by it and frightened by it. But many of them were just kind of consumed with their own crisis and challenge. So I think that's the first piece. And then the second piece on will they be coming to us? I don't know. I don't, we don't, we'll do what we can if that were to be the case. We don't turn away anybody. We'll accept everybody in our age group. So there's a possibility that they'll come our way. And we'll, we'll rise up. You know, we did a large human trafficking excavation of over a hundred men from India this past summer and we were way out of our lane, but we figured it out together. And so if this creates a challenge that we've never seen before, which it could be, you know, we'll rally again and provide the services that we can, you know, as best we can. We're a creative bunch, as I saw in this last huge crisis that we were deleting. So more to be seen there and we'll share that with you if it happens. We don't have really any indication that it'll be a flow to Covenant House, but it could be, so we'll see.
Just to piggyback off what, um, Jim had said, the young people have a group called Legal Lens and it's really looking at different legal aspects. Um, it's run by a former Covenant House employee who's a lawyer. And last week they talked about Ukraine and the young people were really, really engaged. Like they were really actively participating in that group and had a lot of good thoughts from what I've heard. So they are aware of what's going on, some of them, and, and talking about it and really thinking critically about it. Um, that's really the whole purpose of that group is to get them to think a little bit more critically.
Mm-hmm. And we've worked with other youth, other refugees or those who have asylum, um, from other countries as well. So we, we have resources or a direction we can provide anyone who needs support with immigration status and, and helping them to get connected into their new community. Um, so I, I would kind of put that in the same category that we wouldn't turn anyone away, that we'd help them navigate if they came to us from that situation.
Great. Thank you. I would do want to acknowledge Marie's shout out that, uh, Covenant House is accepting the nonprofit organizational of the year award for the Moms Chamber. Um, I know that that's a group that has been, um, very dedicated to our work and supporting Covenant House. So that's exciting for us too. Um, it's nice to be affirmed, uh, for the good that we're trying to do in the community. Um, before we wrap it up with Tony, um, any other, I think we have time for maybe one last question from anyone? Hearing and seeing none? Toni Marie, our wonderful event coordinator is going to share some exciting news about things taking place, um, in the next couple of months.
Thanks, Jen. Hi, community. Uh, as Jen said, I'm Toni Marie Di Pietro, Covenant House New Jersey's event coordinator. And I'm going to take the next few minutes, just a few. I know it's getting to be eight o'clock. I want to be respectful of everyone's time. And we're going to go through ways for you to get involved. Our next upcoming event is our Sleepout Covenant House New Jersey Community Edition. This sleepout is comprised of four communities, including Asbury Park, Camden, Newark, and Young Professionals. This sleepout is on March 25th. The program is, will be offered a fully virtual. And then participants will have the option to either sleep out at a CHNJ designated location or at a location of their choosing. There's still time to register, fundraise and support these amazing communities. On Tuesday, March 29th, we are hosting a women's event led by life coach Beth Fitzgerald, an official member of Forbes Coaches Council. Beth will be providing a fun, interactive evening to get us all unstuck and fired up for 2022. On Friday, April 29th, we'll be hosting Sleepout Women Unite. We are excited to say that we'll be hosting this both fully virtually and in person, meaning we will host an online program for those who would like to sleep out virtually. While others will come to the Newark Shelter for a pro program and to sleep out in solidarity in our parking lot as in years past. And last but not least, we are thrilled to announce that our Night of Broadway Stars, Covenant House New Jersey's signature gala will be live at NJ PAC on Wednesday, June 15th. We are so excited to have our whole community together again. If you have any questions regarding any of the events, please feel free to contact me. I'm going to drop my contact info in the chat for easy access. This has been such a great night. Thank you to all of our speakers as it was extremely informative. We are very happy you could all join us tonight and we hope to see you all in person very, very soon. Have a great evening.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
I want to shout out Jim Gallagher. How are you? Miss seeing you playing those drums in the gym, Jen.
I beg your pardon?
I miss you with the kids playing the bongos in the gym.
Oh, yes, that, that was a lot of fun.
I know. I miss walking in on and joining the group. I hope, I hope you're well.
Yes. In fact, I'm, I'm doing quite well. And, um, living up here at, in a, in a scene of adult community and pumped in planes.
Oh, nice.
Uh, you know, they're taking good care of us. You know, they give us and, uh, you know, your shots and boosters and dinner every night and all that kind of good stuff. So I hope to be down to see you pretty soon, Toni.
I know. I hope so too. Take, take care and be well.
Uh, thank you very much.
Take care.
Good, good.
Guys. Good night, guys. Take care.
Bye.
Bye. Is that Bill? How are you, Bill? Been so long. I know. You're on mute.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Beth. Have a great night, Beth. Hold on, Jeanette.
Nice.
Bill, I can't hear you. You're still on mute. But anyway, it was great seeing you. Take care. Have a good night.